Yeah, momentarily here.
Okay.
And I think we are good to go.
Something to knock on the table with. Call to order, the regular virtual meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garz.
Here.
Mayor Tim Johnson. Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
City Manager Knop.
Here.
Chief Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Gillingham.
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell. Water Superintendent Jensen.
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor.
And City Clerk Douglas Crescent, thank you.
Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ceremonial matters. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one is honoring November 2021 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. City Manager, is there anyone here that I'm presenting the proclamation virtually to?
Karen, do we have a group on the line?
Um, possibly. I see some names I don't recognize, but yet I believe we do have someone. Possibly Kim from, from manager of the Alzheimer's Association.
Well, I'm, I will just say, if you are here on, on the Zoom call, welcome and thank you for being here. And recognizing how important this issue is. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to make the proclamation. So I will now read the proclamation. The Alzheimer's Association's proclamation honoring November 2021 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. Whereas more than 6 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and this number is projected to rise to nearly 14 million in 30 years. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in America and the third leading cause of death in California. One in five Californians aged 65 plus will develop dementia. Whereas there are 690,000 people with Alzheimer's living in the state of California, over 3,000 of whom live in Humboldt, and an estimated 9,000 caregivers in Humboldt County who are involved in the care of a loved one with Alzheimer's. Whereas more than 11 million Americans provide unpaid-for care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. In 2020, caregivers of people with Alzheimer's and other dementias provided an estimated 15.3 billion hours of unpaid assistance, a contribution to the nation valued at nearly $257 billion. Whereas in 2020, the lifetime cost of care for a person living with dementia was $337,527. Whereas the responsibilities of caring for someone with dementia often falls to women. Approximately 2/3 of caregivers are women. Whereas the Alzheimer's Association is marking November as 2021's National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month. Therefore, we, the City Council of Riedel, California, do hereby proclaim November as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month in Humboldt County. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this? Are there any hands raised or emails? Then we will forward this to the Alzheimer's Association in Humboldt County. Our second proclamation is in support of the countywide Traffic Safety Task Force and the Vision Zero goal. Is there anyone on our call who would like to speak to this? I will read this proclamation. Proclamation recognizing the countywide Traffic Safety Task Force and Vision Zero goal to work towards eliminating all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, health, equitable mobility for all. Whereas Humboldt County ranks number one out of 58 counties in 2018 for traffic collisions involving pedestrians and has a fatal collision rate that doubles the national average and nearly triples those in California. And whereas effective transportation safety policies include a multifaceted approach, including infrastructure development and improvements, enforcement of the laws and education, and safe streets also rely on the personal responsibility and behavior of those who use them. And whereas drivers must inherit, must have an inherent responsibility to maintain a culture of respect and courtesy, avoid causing harm, and protect the community's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Humboldt County residents pride themselves on being value-driven, innovative and proactive problem solvers, and responsive and responsible protectors of community residents and visitors. And whereas national statistics and local experience indicates that low-income people, people of color, older people, and people with disabilities are more likely to be killed while walking or biking. And we are committed to addressing these tragic inequities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Riedel recognizes that safety navigating our streets and sidewalks is a cooperative activity, and be further proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Riedel believes that traffic collisions are not inevitable and adopts the Vision Zero goal to work towards eliminating all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, health, equitable mobility for all. Signed at this day, 16th day of November 2021. And did anyone join the call while we, while I was reading that would like to speak to this? Hearing nothing, oh, I'm sorry?
No hands, no, and no one has joined.
Thank you. Then we will sign this and forward it to the Traffic Safety Committee. Now we will move on to public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or the staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least 2/3 of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. We have any hands raised or emails?
No hands raised.
And Mayor Garz, I did receive two public comments.
Would you read them, please?
Yes. The first one is from Millie Crummett. And she says, Dear Mayor and City Council Members, as President Biden just granted a $1.2 trillion deal, would you please be diligent in requesting funds to do proper drainage sewer and street repairs on Ogle Avenue as well as the rest of our town? Ogle was one-third done, but as you know, needs to be completed. The new streets look great. It helps our property values and safety. Thank you for your continued assistance on this matter. And the second one is from Steve Harrison. And it says, To Riedel Mayor and City Council Members, I am greatly disturbed to hear that you are about to destroy $15,000 with the firearms that could be sold out of state. The proceeds could go into the city treasury. Then spend $2,500 for this destruction? There are legal methods to sell them. Then you continue to bill us on exorbitant water rates while throwing away this revenue. I pay $118 just to be hooked up each month and get charged for the first unit of water used up Monument Road. The guns are valuable and should be in the hands of responsible people, not destroyed. You could use a gun broker to sell them and get revenue for the city. I urge you to reverse the bad decision made at the last meeting. Also, it's very bad to cut the public out with no in-person meetings. And that's the end.
Thank you. Are there any further emails or hands raised while we were hearing the comments?
No hands.
I see no emails.
Thank you. Then we will now move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone from council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Would like to remove item five?
Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing or no one. Is there a motion to approve items one through four, six and seven on the consent calendar?
I so move, Woodall.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second, Carter.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Garz?
Yes, motion carries for zero. Councilmember Wilson, item number five.
Yes, I see we, item number five was authorized negotiators for real property purchase. Are, did the council, I mean, I may have lost track of this, but did we authorize, we're going to buy this property? Is that our intent? Obviously, if we're getting negotiators.
So not, not yet. And the council may decide not to pursue the property. The property may end up not being for sale. But if Councilmember Wilson would, will recall during the adoption of the Economic Development Plan and the Immediate Action Plan, one of the top five priorities listed for immediate action from staff was to pursue, you know, potential developments of the Todd property. So we have been in contact, we have made contact with, with that particular owner. And then obviously, we also have the LEAP grant funding that we're looking at in terms of doing pre-design and, and that sort of activity out there. So, so I don't know if we're going to be at a closed session. Most likely, our closed session would be at the first meeting in December. I don't know that there will honestly be a whole lot to report at that particular meeting, but a dialogue has, has begun.
Okay, that, and that's kind of where my memory was, was from that. I didn't find my notes on the Economic Development Action Plans. So that's, that was what was in my mind when I said, my memory isn't serving me correctly, but I thought it might be part of that, of the, what you called the Economic Development Process. Also, then when I saw that we did get a, I think we approved a request for getting an appraisal on the property as well. So I just, thank you for that update and making that clear to my mind.
Are there any other questions regarding item five? Are there any hands raised or emails regarding item five? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve item five?
I will make a motion that we approve item five as recommended by staff.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second, Carter.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Garz?
Yes, motion carries for zero. Thank you. Just making a little note here, here we go, okay. Now we will move on to report staff, report and staff communications. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
What, page 47 in your packet, sorry Kyle.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Garz, members of the council. So I wanted to just bring to your attention the letter attached to the staff report beginning on page 53. This is a letter of commitment through the Solid Waste Local Task Force for Compliance Services Consulting regarding SB 1383, which the council's pretty well aware of at this point, which is the mandatory organics recycling requirement. Right now, we have the cooperation of all of the jurisdictions. In particular, the county of Humboldt has contributed well over half of the financing to develop this plan. One of the advantages in our participation is, is one, we can leverage as a member of HWMA the benefits of being an HWMA member. So the cost is relatively low, even though we do have some exemptions in statute. However, if at some point regulations change or state law changes and we are required to adhere to the T of SB 1383, we would be having to essentially spend this, the full amount of money, approximately $150,000 some odd dollars for consultant agreements on our own. So it makes, you know, sense financially to have this report done upfront as early as possible in cooperation with all of our... And sorry, once again, it tries to mute me when I talk. So that would include all of our city partners and our county partners banding together, including HWMA, to help mitigate the costs for the smaller jurisdictions. So that, again, is, the full letter is attached to page 53. There is no budget impact at this point. So $3,000 relatively negligible cost for the value of the data that we get back. We did do an all-staff training on Wednesday, the 11th, related to information security. So there are a growing number of threats related particularly to email and ransomware targets. So we are doubling up on our training in that regard. And with that, we are currently advertising for a operator and training position at Public Works. And then also a part-time help position with the utility crew, which we do need to hire as soon as possible. So certainly encourage anybody out there in the public who knows of somebody interested in that type of work to submit their application here at City Hall. With that, I will return it back to the mayor to see if there's any questions.
Thank you. City Manager. I will reach out now to the council, Councilmember Woodall.
Yes, I have some questions for Chief Connors, um, four questions. First off, how is our recruitment going for a new officer?
Well, I've received two applications so far. Encourage both of those potential candidates to do right along some, so far neither one of them has. I'm not sure I'm optimistic about the prospects of hiring somebody in the next couple of months. I'm hoping we'll get some more applications before the end of the year. And I will go and visit the new academy class at CR in January and try and get some applications from them. Hope to test somewhere in the end of January, after the holiday season.
Thank you. Let's see, two things, one with the code enforcement. I'm wondering if when Amanda and I get the complaints that come in on the complaint forms, I'm wondering if when, if all the council members can get a copy when Amanda and I get ours, so they can sort of follow along and see what some of the areas we need to address are. And also, I'd like to ask if I can, or maybe if the council wants it, I'd like to ask if I could get an inventory of all the guns being destroyed when one is available. And then my last thing is on animal control. I was wondering how, how we handle it, if we get the animals that come in. I know that lots of times we return them. When we return them to the owners, if they are not licensed, how do we handle that? I mean, do they, can they get like a fix-it ticket or do we just return them? Are they, do they need to come in and get the license and show proof of vaccinations? How, how, how are the animals handled?
So CSO Clark is working on a new policy that she served with all the other officers. And basically, when we return a dog to the owner that's unlicensed with the city, we tell them they have two weeks to obtain a license, which includes showing us proof of rabies vaccination. And if they fail to do that, they can be issued an administrative citation.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, and the other two things were just the copies of the complaints of nuisance abatement for all council members and asking for the inventory of the guns being destroyed, if I can, please. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Wood, uh, Wilson.
Yes, the only comment I have is, is back on the city manager referred to the action with HWMA. And that was, I don't know if this is time to do it as my, is this something I was going to report on tonight anyway? But it's, it's a good, it's a good thing that we're doing this with HWMA, in my opinion, that this bill, 1383, you're going to hear this probably till you get tired of, to death of hearing about 1383. It's a, it's a bill to get the organic waste out of the landfills. And we get it, we have two years of exemptions, but two years is going to go by fairly, fairly quickly. And then we're, then we are going to have to start complying with this process. So by being a member agency of HWMA and then working, we've discussed in there about setting up this regional facility that, to be able to handle that waste. And it's going to be a big deal. So I'm, I'm excited about the fact that we are signed on. We're getting like, HWMA is subsidizing it, but we aren't paying. I think it was in the city manager's report somewhere in our stuff that showed we would have, we would have had to pay another additional $1,800 on top of the 3,000 of HWMA if we weren't members of HWMA to, to help set this up. And then all of the staff that we're not going to have to spend the time on where the agency is taking the lead on that, to do a lot of administrative work to fix a real, real hard-broken wheel to, to get rid of this organic waste is really a big deal. You have to figure out how you're going to get this organic waste, which would normally just go in your garbage, how you're going to separate that. It's, it's organic food waste. And how you get that separated from your other garbage and along with the garbage that you have coming from your house. So the other part that'll help play in this is universal collections in that it will hopefully help us separate it. So thank you, City Manager, for having the city participate in that. That's all I have, I believe, in questions.
Thank you, Frank, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. I was actually going to ask them about the HWMA thing too. What exactly are they doing? I mean, I'm all about it, I'm glad. It just, there's references to, you know, the project. And I was just wondering if we knew any more details about what exactly the project is.
You're muted, Kyle.
You're muted, Kyle.
Sorry, I can, I can get you the, the proposal, the RFP for the, for the study.
Yeah.
But basically, it's just a regional approach to, to solving the compliance issues related to 1383.
It's compliance issues, though, okay.
Yeah, trying to do it collectively and spread as much of the cost as possible. And this is really, you know, it was driven by the, there's a separate group, the Solid Waste Local Task Force, which involves, which involves all, all public agencies in Humboldt County. That's required to meet, I believe, at least once or twice a year annually. We're meeting very regularly now at this point, once or twice a month, in addition to some ad hoc committee meetings related to, you know, also poll, contamination of recycling and those, those sorts of issues that, that are, are going to be very problematic in the, in the near future. And then you have HWMA, and we have the advantages, Councilmember Wilson, instead of being a member and getting reduced costs for being a member of HWMA.
Thank you. Um, and then my other question, there was one about, just how did we do drainage-wise on this last storm? It's kind of started raining all of a sudden, so I just was curious how that was going.
Yeah, I think Randy might be in a better position to answer that, if he's on.
Yep, I'm on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, so with the upgrades that we've done with the last paving project and with the crews basically keeping up with the DIs, keeping them clean and whatnot, we haven't had any issues with anybody calling in with drainage problems at their location, with their homes or anything. So so far with that, I believe that we are doing fairly well. And I believe we've actually even impacted some of the INI that goes into the sewer system, where we're collecting it in the storm drain instead of having it get in the sewer system. I think we're doing pretty well, thank you.
Awesome, glad to hear it, thank you. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. And I have no questions. Are there any hands raised or emails regarding the reports and staff communications?
No hands raised.
And no emails.
Thank you. And we will move to special presentations. Page 53 in our packet, it is presentation on Zero Waste Humboldt. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garz, and members of the council. Just a correction to the packet, the PowerPoint for Zero Waste Humboldt begins on page 55 of your packet.
I'm sorry.
So I am happy to introduce Maggie Gaynor and Kyra Skylark from Zero Waste. They do have a presentation, and I am just planning on displaying the PowerPoint. Maggie, and if, if you want to walk through it and just tell me when to move on to the next slide, then that will work for you. for you, but I will go ahead and turn it over to to either Maggie or Kyra to start us out.
Thank you.
Let me welcome you both. Thank you for being here and thank you for the presentation you're about to give us. We appreciate your being here. And I love your drum picture. Kyra.
Thank you all so much for having us here. Good evening, mayor and council members of Rio Del. I'm Kyra Skylark, Zero Waste Humboldt's Public Education Coordinator. Kyle, if you want to start sharing your screen or I can share, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you all for this time on your agenda for a quick update on sustainable materials management. In 2014, we initiated this annual time in November for public education events and activities and opportunities to update local governments. In the next few minutes, we'll concentrate on reuse systems and updating you on recently passed laws. And I just want to say happy belated Zero Waste Day, which was yesterday. If you want to enter into presentation mode or just go on to the next slide. I believe Maggie's going to take over from here. And then I'll jump back in.
Hi folks, thanks so much for having us a few minutes on your agenda tonight. I'm gonna just start, we'll do a fast forward, we promised to be brief, but a little bit of past, present and future. In the early seventies, we started off, we being those of us working on waste issues. I'm so old, I count myself among them. And we started with a hierarchy of the what everybody refers to as the old three Rs. And the first R being reduce and then reuse and then recycling. We've learned from public health that people understand the concept of prevention better than reduce. And and so we now refer to that first in this hierarchy. We refer to it as waste prevention. So it really is a critical thinking hierarchy for planning in business and government, investment and in in assessing environmental impact. So you get the biggest bang for your buck and and the biggest bang for small carbon footprint in the work that you do when you focus first on prevention strategies. We also found over the years that the general public, while everybody says reduce, reuse, recycle, and everyone knows that. They tend to use those three Rs interchangeably like they're equal and they're not. So prevention first. Then reuse and there are many forms of materials reuse. And and then recycling after the waste has the discarded material has been generated and then the best thing to do is to figure out ways for it to enter recycling system or if it's as Kyle's been talking about with SB thirteen eighty-three composting systems and other ways to deal with organic material. So I would say if if you if you haven't noticed the over the past fifty years, the the majority of public and private resources, the vast majority of it has gone straight to recycling rather than the first two top priorities. And I just want to make a note of that. So we'll focus tonight just a a little brief about materials reuse and how many different kinds there are. We showed a had a public viewing last night, hosted a movie night on a film about reuse. So the the photo on your top left is a good example, and that's a local photo of deconstruction. And that is becoming more and more popular. Uh, and and commonly understood in 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 ways to go about taking a building down carefully so that different building materials can be used again for, you know, their value. Yeah, the wrecking ball is 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 becoming something more and more of the past and there will be more laws regarding deconstruction to encourage it. On the photo, I I hope you can see to the right is Darren Ferrera, a proud third generation local dairyman who recently, earlier this year, invested in sanitizing equipment so that now you can buy his Ferrera and Son milk in a returnable bottle. Up to this point, you could only get your milk in returnable bottles from Strauss Family Dairy in central California. And so this is a real step forward in what we try to encourage. All these forms of reuse again are better for the environment and and economically better to do everything we can with reuse first. So around the country, it's being called return to returnables, the refillable revolution. But if if we focus on this, it will even help recycling systems and in the problems with contamination if we focus on reuse as well. So the other photos here in the bottom left, gradually more and more of our grocery stores are providing opportunities to for you to not have so many containers when you come home with your groceries. Whether they're cardboard boxes or cans or all kinds of plastic bags and plastic packaging. And so my my personal favorite because it's inexpensive and I have, I I love my my pretty glass jars in my kitchen, but I don't like to carry glass jars around in the car. So at the bottom in the middle, you see a yogurt container with a good snap on lid. And and that's what I will take with me in my reusable bags when I go shopping for all the grains. Gosh, just just, I mean, I really have been able to dramatically reduce all the containers. The the one in the middle is just a prettier example that you can buy Tupperware and other kinds of things to buy your your groceries in. And then at the top there in the middle, you know, that's the one habit I think, gosh, more and more folks really have adopted is and it is a state law and you know, that we use reusable shopping bags to carry our groceries. Next slide. There we go. Another example of of reuse and and it kind of illustrates too that it is another, not nearly as expensive, but infrastructure is needed to be invested in for reuse systems too. A lot of it is plumbing and commercial dishwashers and and cleaning and and that kind of thing. So a couple of years ago, we worked hard to raise funds and we have so far acquired ten water bottle refill stations and distributed them around several local governments and two local high schools. And the one requirement that we had is that they choose a model and most have a clicker, a counter on them so that you really can kind of monitor how their usage. And what we would discovered in the first two years, right before COVID really threw a ringer in our record keeping and and seeing how we were doing is approximately fifty thousand single use plastic water bottles have been able to be avoided in the waste stream because we made these more convenient with the cooperation of, we we call it our refill not landfill network of local governments and schools. And then the other nice thing is they began to, I mean, they were just a real good trial, the more visible and in in high traffic areas like parks and rec buildings and the more that people can really see them, then the more they're used. But we're real pleased with this and I think what we're going to do it's early next year is ask everyone who has been participating in using these, their staff had to do the plumbing and install them. So that's part of the partnership in the network. We're going to reset those counters and try to start over again with a fresh year. Let's go on to the next slide. So this is, I'm going to do just a a a quick fast forward. And this is from, you know, you reach a certain age where you have the benefit of perspective and see patterns and in the nineteen sixties through the seventies, in that period of time, what what I observed is more and more of the laws that were related to I'll call it modern recycling programs really started first with Californians' concerns about litter. It became a big embarrassment for California's tourism industry. So there was a strong political ally in the hospitality and tourism industry. They didn't want to invite people to California and then to see all along I five and Highway one oh one and throughout California, lots and lots of litter. The other strong ally was agricultural industry. Farmers were beginning, now this is the nineteen sixties to the nineteen seventies, they were starting to see in dead farming animals, cows, too many fast food containers. Again, blown off of the sides of the roads. So recycling first became introduced more as a a healthy, healthier, better alternative to tossing it out the window. There was a place where you could take bottles and cans and newspapers and some of the the early basics. Plastics hadn't really entered the picture. And then in the nineteen eighties to the nineteen nineties, we move on and Californians became very concerned about landfill space shortages and a lot of the legislation during that period of time had to do with citing landfills. I put NIMBY here, not in my backyard. How to how to build a landfill, how to cap off and close a landfill, all of the legal requirements. And it was really a big concern of Californians about where are we going to put all this stuff? And now in the two thousands, what has really emerged is Californians concern about the severe damage that is happening to our state because of climate change. And so the legislation, there has been a flurry of it in SB thirteen eighty-three that Kyle referred to was first enacted in two thousand sixteen and it took a little while for the regulations to really get settled so that we knew how it could be implemented at the local level. And I will really agree with, reiterate Kyle's points because I've lived through all of these different laws and how they impacted us at the local level. This is the most significant waste related legislation since nineteen eighty-nine and it will impact everyone. There is I won't go into more detail there. And and so I would say climate change and then, as you all know, anybody who read, you know, just reads the 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 news. Plastic pollution has is overwhelming now. And so there's more and more legislation related to that. Kyle, you want to help me with the next slide? We're winding down now, folks. And so Kyle's already referred to a lot of this. There's a companion, there are actually about four or five of these laws that are related to organic waste, food waste in particular. SB thirteen eighty-three is the one that is the big focus right now for all of our Humboldt County's local governments. AB eighteen twenty-six was passed around the same time. And it will, it 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 kind of relates more to businesses, but it's it's a companion piece. So the types of work that is is going to be happening here over the next couple of years, and this is in a phased approach is we're all going to be changing our habits and business operations to reduce food waste. And and again, just to make the point, food waste that goes to landfills is turns into methane and that is one of the more powerful greenhouse gas emissions. It's short-lived but extremely powerful and damaging. And so that's why this this concentration on food waste and organics. The next thing is food waste prevention. We recently did an edible food recovery assessment for the cities of Arcata and Eureka to see how our capacity to be able to recover more edible food for people who need it in Humboldt County. The next thing is business to business support. And there's some already some great examples of how businesses work with each other. A byproduct of one business can help another. And then food waste to farm animals. And then lastly, food waste for composting, carbon farming, digesters and the larger centralized facility that we're hoping we can develop with Zero Waste Humboldt has always encouraged and agreed with HWMA that a strong regional approach is the way to go. So that's an emphasis on that. Kyra, you want to take, we have, we have another slide.
Sure, I'll take over the next slide if you want to switch. Thank you so much, Kyle. So more laws will not solve all of our waste and climate change challenges, but we are happy to have this legislative support for our work. Briefly, here are just five of the new waste related laws. I'll give a brief overview. Regulations will need time to be finalized for implementation, so these won't all happen and be carried out immediately. But briefly, AB eight eighty-one helps the state accurately measure how much plastic is actually recycled and prohibits plastic waste exports to be in to other countries being counted as recycling. AB twelve oh one updates labeling for compostable products. AB nine sixty-two makes it easier for brewers and other beverage producers to create reusable glass bottle systems to reduce the need for single use beverage containers. We're especially interested in this one with local businesses working to transfer over to glass and reusable containers. AB twelve seventy-six, to reduce plastic foodware waste by giving takeout customers single use foodware only when requested. And SB three forty-three requires products to meet certain standards to be advertised or labeled as recyclable and prohibits manufacturers from using the chasing arrows symbol and other confusing labeling symbology and wording, which is an issue that creates confusion within local communities. Next slide, Kyle? The next slide is our conclusion. So awesome. Thank you so much for having us here. We're always happy to use this local governments and their waste reduction goals and planning. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask them now. And if not, we're always available for future questions or inquiries at zerowastehumboldt@gmail.com. Thank you all so much again for your time.
Thank you both for the excellent, very informative presentation. We appreciate it. I hope we learned something. I learned some stuff, so that's really great. I'm going to ask the council, I'm going to reach out and see if there are any questions. Councilmember Wilson?
No, I don't have any questions. At this point. It's something we're going to have to deal with, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Yes, thank you. No questions. I just want to thank you both for being here. The first landfill I ever saw changed my life. I'll never forget it. I appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And councilmember Woodall?
Yeah, I was watching TV the other night and it was about recycling and they said at one point that of all recyclables, only ten percent are actually recycled. Would that be a true statement, do you think?
It it's a little bit regional, but it has become problematic nationwide. And it's a complex answer. There's no one reason for that. It has declined some in recent years and I'll be very blunt spoken about it. A lot of it, a lot of it has to do with the last new law that Kyra just described, trying to address it. The petrochemical industry that is manufacturing, extracting resources, manufacturing, all of the single use plastics that we now have in our daily lives has been misleading the general public. And that has caused expensive problems for recycling collection systems at the curb. The, you know, I, these days when I'm asked and I'm asked frequently, you know, I know I didn't get any stupider, you know, why is it so difficult to understand what is and what isn't recyclable? I I start off with, don't read what's on the package. Follow the instructions of your, the collector in your area, in your case, recology. Because they will tell you what is and what isn't, what they're able to market and 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 sell. So there are a number of reasons for it. It is they're able to market and sell. So there are a number of reasons for it. It is not China's fault. We pretty much did this to ourselves in the United States, and now we're working on a comeback to strengthen recycling programs again.
Thank you. And my other question is, I like, I really like the idea of prevention being first rather than the other, because we do have to prevent it. But why don't we put more pressure on some of the big manufacturers to, like, not put the water bottles, for instance? I mean, you're, you know, we're trying to get people not to use them, but it seems wouldn't it be better to some of the manufacturers that are doing these, put pressure on them also to change their ways, like soda, let's go for the soda manufacturers. They used to, all the sodas used to come in glass, and now there's plastic and aluminum. Do they try to work with the big manufacturers too to change what they're putting out for sale?
You're absolutely right. We have to address these problems at all levels, at the broader, bigger level that you're talking about, and then each and of each one of us in our daily lives, our habits and at our workplace. When we first brought the zero-waste movement to Humboldt County almost exactly 10 years ago, we're celebrating that this year, there were very few large national organizations that focused on zero-waste issues and problems. And now there are several. We have stronger, larger allies that are pressuring state legislatures, Congress, and you'll start to see, again, Kira made the point, laws don't fix all the problems, but it, you know, we need all of, all hands on deck as far as how overwhelming the plastic problem has become. And so, yes, 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 yes. I am an impatient person, and I can tell you that some of the progress being made in the most recent few years gives me great hope. And one of the things is, besides greater pressure on these companies to, it's honestly what they have done over the past 50 years is use recycling as the reason why they don't have to make any changes. And we need to do all of the work when they should not have been making such wasteful products and packaging in the first place. So that's slowly, slowly happening. And one of the things that gives me the greatest hope is younger adults are much more on top of this. And it's part of a lifestyle of simplicity, of fixing things, of reuse, of using, you know, bringing your own water bottle. I see that more and more across the country. And so we just have to hang in there and work on at all levels in our daily habits and in pressuring the companies that are causing the problem.
I would also like to add on, the best ways to put, quote unquote, pressure onto those larger organizations and businesses is to change the consumer market. So for example, Humboldt State University doesn't offer disposable water bottles on campus because they have refillable, the refillable stations, which is a project that Zero Waste worked on recently. And you can't access water unless you go to very few places. It's not within the marketplaces. They have a million different refillable stations and water fountains all around campus, and that helps to create more awareness for the students themselves and the community, because the refillable stations are in the community as well. But eliminating, not just putting pressure on the big businesses, but eliminating some of those plastic practices within our communities and within our shops within the communities, also then creates a ripple effect if enough smaller communities and larger cities implement legislation or just agreements between individuals, community members, local businesses, organizations, and local governments to put pressure on the big markets, because they're not going to necessarily change their practices unless they feel that there's a need to change those practices. If people keep buying the plastic, they're going to keep putting things in plastic. If people stop buying the plastic and put pressure on putting things in glass, then they're going to be more likely to transfer into glass. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. That answers my question. And thank you for being here tonight, because this was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you, Kyle, if you ever want, council members, if you ever would like us to work with you, and when we first started working with the city of Eureka a few years ago, it was just simply to come up with a resolution that, you know, they felt like fit the city of Eureka's residents, and we started there. And similar with Arcata, so I'll just toss that out. We're always working on grant proposals so that, you know, we can do this kind of thing and in this kind of outreach. Again, we wanted to waive a proclamation tonight and take your time for a quick update. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both. I just, I had one question too before you go, though. First, one of the things that we're talking about packaging drives me crazy is organic food in plastic. It's like, ah, it makes you crazy. But I was wondering about your edible food recovery. That's something I think that is very interesting to me and seems like a very important portion of this whole issue. And both to help what we throw out as waste, but also more importantly, actually, to help people who need food and who cannot get it. And so if that's something that I would love to sit down and talk with you about that kind of a program, and I hope that we can do that. And I also hope that we can as a city, and we would have to, you know, agendize that, talk the proclamation or however we would do that, you know, that, to get something from the city of Riedel to get us on board. I think that we want to be on board. I know I want to be on board. I think I get the feeling that the rest of us want to be on board. So if there's, if you wouldn't mind if I reached out to you about certain things, I would love to just to start a dialogue so that we can too be in on this, you know, because this is a very important issue.
Mayor, we'd love it. We'd love it. As a small organization, we tend to go to where we're invited. And when there's interest expressed, then we're with you. And we'll figure out funding, we'll, you know, we'll really work on it. I can tell you just real quickly, I know you have the rest of your agenda for this evening. We, in, we just finished this analysis for the cities of Eureka and Arcata, and man, it was no surprise, but it just, as a real detailed study of many, many interviews and, and both quantitative and qualitative analysis of edible food recovery in our county, we have an extraordinary system that, you know, an intricate network of food pantries, Food For People, and many others involving churches and in all different kinds of after-school programs and everything. And so every time, what we need to do now, every time a new business, food business, food serving, food manufacturing, or restaurant kind of business starts up, we need to immediately make sure they know how they can get their edible food, you know, through a system. And there's all kinds of apps now, some new technologies that can maybe streamline and help make some of that even better. We'll be meeting with the Food For People and a couple, the two largest cities in our county in a couple of weeks to really begin. And so I'd love to talk with you about it more.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'll get your information from the city manager, and I will reach out to you. That's a commitment. Thank you both for being here. We really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too.
And now we, oh, I guess people are gone. Now we will move on to item J, receiving file fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021 annual financial report, page 64 in our packets. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. I do have to pull up another PowerPoint here, so give me a second, and I'll turn it over to Cheryl in the meantime. And Cheryl, you're muted.
Got the picture, forgot about the sound. So the report that I'm going to cover starts on page 65 and goes through page 68. The PowerPoint is basically just kind of a summary of that annual financial report. So when we were developing the budget for 2021, it was the beginning of the pandemic, and we were also best looking at implementing the compensation study. So I'm just going to put those two out as like kind of big things that were actually slightly over a year ago. So you can go to the next slide, Kyle. So basically, this slide shows the actual revenues and actual expenditures for last year by fund type. We have three fund types, the general fund, which is your primary operating fund, your enterprise funds, which are your water and sewer, and then your special revenue funds, which are basically everything else, which includes streets as one of the biggest ones, and CDBG. In the general fund, there's more slides to go over that. And in the enterprise funds, the growth was mostly due to water, which the, or I'm not, it's the gain-loss, meaning that revenues for water exceeded expenditures by 523,000, and for sewer it was 153,000. So most of that 676 was due to water. In the special revenue funds, the 300,000 increase is primarily due to CDBG loans that were paid off, and we had slightly better-than-anticipated streets funds activities where we get estimates for streets from the state. It's one of the few revenue sources that they actually make an effort to forecast. And so there, it was actually $16,000 better than what the state had forecasted. And then expenditures were lower. And I do believe I heard Riendi say that all the street work we've done has actually made it easier to take care of the streets, the street work that the general fund has done. And I just wanted to also point out that in the CDBG funds, at the end of the year, we had a cash balance of 405,000, and that there's still over $800,000 in outstanding loans that are owed to the city for the program where we did home improvement loans to residents. So next slide, Kyle? So this slide shows just the major funds, and it shows budget to actuals. And so, as I said earlier, it was COVID, and so we were super conservative about the revenues. And we were also looking at implementation of the compensation study. So we had a $200,000 contingency for that, which we ended up not using any of it. That was primarily due to vacancies, where, you know, you know what a vacancy is. We had staff vacancies and...
And it appears Cheryl's dropped, but...
And actually, we had vacancies in the finance department. Oh, I'm unstable. Sorry, my interconnection is unstable. Did you catch that? Want to go to the next slide, Kyle? So this table is a little small, but it's actually also on page 65 of your packet. And it's just a very detailed fund-by-fund showing what the beginning balances were, what, like, what revenues were, what expenditures were, and what the, well, what the change in balance was. And the good news is that we increased our reserves by 1.3 million and ended the year with a total overall balance in the, all of the city funds of $9 million, which was a 17% increase from the beginning of the fiscal year. The general fund ended the fiscal year. The general fund is the one at the top. When I did the slide, I did something that somehow made the general fund name disappear, but that top line that has the three zeros, that's the general fund. So the beginning balance was 2,150,000, and then we had the revenues and expenditures, and we ended with 2,500,000. So this was an increase of 354,836, due to actual revenues exceeding expenditures. At the time of budget development, we had anticipated the balance would be 1.7 million, which means when we did the budget for the current year, we thought the beginning balance would be 1.7. It was 795,000 more of that. 500,000 was basically due to projects that were not completed that we rebudgeted at the last council meeting. And the remaining difference, there are a lot of numbers, of 283,924 was primarily due to revenues being higher than estimated. So to kind of sum it up, the adjusted carryforward ending balance was about 2 million, and the current year ending estimate is now 1.7 million based on what we think that we're going to spend in the current year. And there will be more discussion on this when I do the mid-year report. So we can go to the next slide. So this is where we get into the general fund. And basically, total city revenues for the general fund were $2 million, which is actually quite amazing. If you look, I think if you go back just six or seven years, it was, it was like $500,000. And this graph shows how it's spread out. And we've actually, you know, it's getting more diversified. The local sales tax and the sales tax, Bradley Burns sale tax is green, and the local measure J is red. And then you've got your property tax and your INLU property tax, VLF, and then your cannabis in orange. And then, so it's basically 20% spread around in that circle. The overall difference between the budget and the actuals was 764,000. Again, a lot of that was, was due to like conservative estimating, because we actually estimated revenues would go down, and they actually went up. And so it was 61% more than estimated. And this was primarily due to sales tax and cannabis revenues. And overall, from year to year, the revenues went up 492,000 from the prior year to the current year. And then we can go to the next slide. And this just shows the major sources of revenue in the general fund, which had an increase of 439,000. So you can see, I previously said 492 and 439. So the bulk of the increases was in these primary funds, or primary revenue sources. And you can see that blue is INLU VLF, and it stays fairly consistent and goes up kind of about 2% to 3% annually. You can see that the sales tax, the red, is a combination of Measure J and the Bradley Burns, how much it went up. And part of that is the, the way they do the, the calculation, so that if you order stuff online now and it's delivered to Riedel, Riedel gets that in Measure J. And we're starting to see Measure J exceed the Bradley Burns significantly because of the way that's done. And then cannabis is the green, and that took a big jump, and that will probably stabilize, maybe, we'll, we'll see what it'll do. And the retail sales tax, they're, they're still looking like it may go up 10% this year, and then they're looking at the future. So they being, from my research, the people that forecast this type of thing think that it'll go up maybe as much as 10% in the current fiscal year, and then it'll start to stabilize down more at like 2%. That concludes my presentation. So basically, really good news considering how the year started. basically, really good news considering how the year started. I don't know if Kyle wants to add anything.
Yeah, if I could just jump in a little bit. This is a very unusual year that we are covering here. So this is, you know, the fiscal year begins July 1st in the city and ends on June 30th. So these are the numbers that, that ended just this last June 30th. And this is just, from my experience of working in the public sector for, you know, well over 10 years now, is a highly unusual year in terms of revenues. I would not anticipate, you know, this upward trajectory of continuing, but I would predict that it would level out or possibly even decline in the, in the coming year. So I just want to make sure that the council's aware of that. In addition, you know, we didn't get as much money out in the last fiscal year as we wanted to, just because of scheduling issues. And again, kind of this arbitrary date of when we do close the fiscal years is kind of in the middle of when we also cut some of the city's largest checks in terms of capital projects. So it's just one of those things. But it is, I think the city's in a good position to make the investments that I know that the council has been wanting to make in terms of infrastructure, particularly streets. I do have good news on our water capital improvement plan grant application, which it is being reviewed during the month of November. It was outlined in the staff report for this, for this meeting. So we are expecting that the state, by the end of this month, is going to be getting closer to a determination on the water capital improvement plan, which hopefully will lead to a very significant project that is mostly grant funded. If not, it also helps us to determine the best steps forward to address some of the existing and numerous infrastructure issues related to water distribution in the city that are, that are quite expensive. So again, we're, we're in a great position to be able to make those investments and really getting dollars out, making sure that the projects are quality, that they're done as efficiently as possible, are, are some of our big challenges. But I think we're in a good position to be able to, to do that. And again, just backing up to this slide here, Cheryl points out the kind of diversification of the city's revenue sources for, for the general fund. This is a pretty good distributed, distributed, diversified portfolio of income. One of the areas, though, that is, is significantly lacking, and that the, the council is well aware of, and we've talked about now for, you know, five or six years, is transient occupancy tax usually composes a larger proportion of, of general fund revenues in other cities. But with that, I want to really just thank Cheryl for being available to, to run the finance department and also put together these, this budget information for the council. I want to appreciate the, the finance department and really all of our, our staff members who've been, I think, very conscientious of how public dollars are spent and how the quality of the projects that we're trying to pull off. So with that, I'll return to the mayor, see if there's any questions.
Thank you, city manager. I will also want to thank you, Cheryl, and the finance department, and Kyle, and the entire city staff. You actually are very conscientious, all of you. And, and it is, you make us look good. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. I will reach out for questions. Council member Woodall?
No, no questions. But I want to say that, you know, after all the years of looking at little financial updates and financial reports, Cheryl makes it very easy to follow. And it was very easy to go through it and understand it. And want to thank everybody. I just have one question for Cheryl. It says on your page that says background and discussion, it says the attached report is for informational purpose, and the audited financial statements, which will, should be completed in January of 2021. You did mean 2022?
Yes, I did. I missed that.
Well, I, I mean, I shouldn't even have asked because I guess it should have been obvious. But thank you, Cheryl, and thanks, everybody in the finance department. I sure appreciate all your work. Thank you.
The audit is actually pretty much complete. I just got a draft of it today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member Woodall. Council member Wilson?
No, no real questions on the financial report. It's a great report. So we're able to continue with our plan to do the, the streets. It seems like that's going to go forward successfully, you know. I don't know who I'm asking that to.
Yeah, I think we do, we have resources to do it. I think one of our challenges coming up is, is rising gas prices, rising construction costs. So, you know, we'll take it one step at a time, but I think it's pretty much guaranteed that the projects that we have on tap for this coming year are going to be the most expensive general fund outlays in the history of the city, at least in the history of general fund contribution towards, towards streets. I will say that, you know, we had an excellent contractor this last summer come in at a very favorable deal to the city financially for the work that they did do. And they did it very professionally and in a very timely manner. I think, you know, this is going to be difficult. The bar was set very, very high this last year in terms of cost, and in terms of the efficiency and, and quality of, of the project. So I just wanted to keep the council aware of that, that we, you know, got an exceptional deal this last year. And, and so I, I do have some concerns that, with the bids that we are seeing coming in, that there is, you know, some cost increases associated with the construction project. So I just want to make sure the council's aware of that.
You know, the, the other thing is to just mention that we try to, at every opportunity, try to promote this to the city that, one is the Measure J, you know, the sales tax initiative, because as that, as that becomes due and needs to be renewed, that they're see, they see they're getting something that's overall as a city, and it seems to be spread pretty well across the whole city. It's not like just one portion of the city is getting the benefit, but the whole, I think the whole city is getting to participate in receiving some benefits in the streets, drainage. That's, that's just, and I know people notice that and appreciate it, particularly potholes and, and all of those kinds of things. So they, when we come and ask to extend that sales tax, again, that we're using it responsibly and for the benefit of the city. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Wilson. Council member Carter?
Thank you. No questions for me. It's a thorough report. I understand. And another round of thank yous to city staff from me. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you. And I have no questions and I've already made my comments. So are there any hands raised or emails?
No hands.
There are no emails.
Okay, well, thank you again, Cheryl, and thank you again, city staff, finance department, everyone. You guys are doing a great job. And it was very understandable. And that's, that is very much appreciated for sure. Okay, so then we will now move on to council reports and communications. Council member Woodall?
Amanda, council member Carter and I took a ride around town today to take a look at some of the things we might want to talk about at the nuisance abatement committee meeting tomorrow, which is at 3 o'clock. And if anybody wants to call in, you can call the office and they will give you the numbers to call through Zoom. But it was a good ride around, and we, we noticed a lot of things that we'll probably want to talk about. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Wilson?
Nothing much to report. I already commented on HWMA. The only other thing about HWMA was the, they have a new executive director. They finally succeeded in hiring that individual from, he's relocating from New Mexico. And Jill Duffy, Duffy, the, will be the outgoing executive director, is finally able to retire with her time there. So that seems to be moving ahead. And then we have RCA is going to meet a week early because of Thanksgiving. And so we'll do that, I think, Thursday. And see what we have there. I know they're, they're working on doing some of the stuff that we've been reaping some benefits from, on their side with their solar energy on our city halls. So they've made some of those things available. And that's good. Other than that, that's all I had to report.
Thank you. Council member Carter?
Thank you. You know, aside from the nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow at 3:00, and my cruising around town with Julie today, no, I have nothing else to report. It's shocking. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a seismic safety commission meeting. They had a report on the earthquake that was in Haiti. And it's going to be years and years and years. The Port-au-Prince earthquake, it was in the capital. It was, so everybody kind of knew about it, and all the countries were donating and helping. And this particular earthquake was in the poorer section, poorer area, I didn't mean to say section, poorer area. And they are not getting as much attention and as much, as many funds as the prior earthquake. So it is very important if anyone, you know, reach out to people you know, organizations you know, and let them know, this was just a tremendous hit to a very, very impoverished area. So that's, that was our update on Haiti. And we talked about the shake table, that, that's going to be our, one of our focuses next year. And we didn't, we as a city, I don't believe, did the, the shakeout. So maybe next year we'll plan on, on doing that and participating. I participated, you know, I got under the table at the, the proper time, 10:17, I think it was. But anyway, maybe next year as a city, we can plan something and, and participate. That might be a nice thing to do and educational. So that is all my, my report. And I think that's it. I think we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Have a good evening, everyone. Meeting's adjourned.